Hey Keith.
Good, good evening. There we go.
Hey Keith, long time no see.
You bet. I like the color of the room.
Yeah, it's um, I don't know, blue. It's blue.
Hey, you want to come and visit?
Oh yeah, for my books. Let's book it. It's Christmas off, it's dark here.
This is Jerry, he's only visiting for a little bit.
Hey buddy. I'd show you back as we'll tear the place apart.
Hey John.
Hey Chris, how are you?
Good, how are you doing John?
Ah, I'm fine. I heard you in the office today.
You're busy, sorry.
But uh, I had Glenn on the phone, we were just going over the regs, our sign regs.
Yeah.
Top and nose with Salisbury. Pretty simple stuff, you know, but you know Glenn, it's line by line, but it was good, you know, it was very good. I think we have something. They give us leeway, you know, it kind of covers everything, you know, like.
Yeah.
The town save, sandwich boards you get one, there's only three people who use them anyway, but no, it was alright, it was good.
Good.
So is your holiday looking tomorrow, Chris?
How's what?
The holiday, Thursday.
Uh, good, we're going to the in-laws on Thursday. And I get most of the weekend to do stuff around the house, which I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, because winter's here very soon.
Yeah, is it next week we have a chance for snow?
Is it really? I haven't paid attention, but we're still.
What about you, what are you up to?
Well, mine's really simple, my in-laws live right over in Salisbury Kettleton Road.
Yep.
So thirty years been doing this, so I got it down pretty good. Yeah.
You can get it, you can get there and back.
Yeah, it's simple, you go over there and just hang out, do the usual, it's small. Her um, sister's in Nashville, her brother will be there, but he's single, and then just my in-laws and my kids and if they happen to bring someone.
Nice.
I never know, yeah, very easy. I think the winner is Keith, he's got the best of both worlds.
What do you got planned Keith? I just have our three children and, and their significant others, all live around, no grandchildren, just, just dogs and cats. And we're going over to our youngest son's and his wife's new house in Thomaston. Excellent. On Sunday.
See, there it is, on Sunday.
On Sunday.
Perfect.
We all get to do what we want for the week, for the weekend, and then we all get together.
Yeah.
Nice. Right Jerry? Watch out, don't hurt yourself. Yeah, you're a good cat. Yeah, yeah, I got my buddy Jerry.
Named after?
Uh, Tom and Jerry.
That was Jerry Garcia.
Well, I do have a picture with it, I could share a picture of him, they used to hang out together. In a past life. But uh, we just named him Jerry because it's kind of, he's kind of like a working class cat. He has no heirs. Right, is that right? Yeah, you're a good cat. Yeah. Okay, let's start counting members. Yes. Sierra. Right here. There you go.
There he is.
Hello, everybody, I see we have a quorum. Hey Ross. How are you? Hey Ross. Hi Suzanne. Now you're.
Hi, this is, I don't know, can you hear me, this is Deirdre, for some reason, it's my daughter's name on it.
Nope, we got you.
Okay.
It's your name, Deirdre.
No, it's.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, in our house, it's Deirdre, Deandra, and Diana.
Kind of like the four names.
That's awesome. Rob says he can't sign in, I'm not sure why. Sue, it sounds like you got the weather report going on there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Is it gonna rain?
I thought the microphone I had off, sorry.
It's alright, alright, we're ready to start, I think, I was trying to help Rob find his way in, I don't know. He says he doesn't have a link, it's in the agenda, right? Yes.
Yeah, it's in the first page of the agenda.
I think I'll email him.
Tell him it's a November eighteenth email. I just had a.
Yeah, I'll just forward it to him.
Yeah.
His email's not coming up, Keith, could you do it? I'll try.
Maybe block yours.
Possibility.
Wouldn't be the first time.
That's for sure. It's RL Horegon, right? Yeah, okay, let me try that, RL Horegon.
I just sent it to him too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he's not coming up, the company probably blocked him.
Do you have any agenda in front of you?
Well, anyway, let's start the meeting, okay? I mean, back to Zoom. Welcome, everybody, this is the regular meeting of the Roxbury inland wetlands and water courses commission for November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we'll start with uh, with John to call the order.
John Smolaga.
Two Fitch. Sierra Gorgleone.
Rob Horegon.
Ah, he made it. Yeah, he is.
Chris Haggerty.
Deirdre Daley.
And that's it, right? We're all here. Yep, all members. I don't have to seat anybody, okay, so could you put the agenda up Keith? Sure can. Let me get that. There we go. Thank you, sir. Uh, so we will go to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Has everybody reviewed the minutes, any comments?
Yeah, under new business, it's W dash eleven two seventy-four, and it says Judge Road, it should be twenty-six Grassy Hill Road.
Gotcha. Good one. Anybody else?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay.
I will also abstain.
Okay, but any other comments? No, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Yep. Do I have a second?
Uh, do we have a quorum of seated members to vote on it?
Is Sierra here, is Sierra here?
I wasn't here last time, so I can't vote.
Yeah, it was just me, John, and uh, you, Chris, right?
Yeah, and Deirdre too, but I'm not seated tonight.
Alright, so I am going to seat Chris for Sierra and Deirdre for Rob Horegon for the approval of the minutes. So I have a motion, but John, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll now go back to seating Rob and Sierra as the regular members. Old business, actually, I'm gonna keep Sierra off. Um, because Chris did the sidewalk, and you know, obviously, he should, if we're gonna have a vote, he should be the one voting, so I'll put Rob back on. Um. So twenty-six Grassy Hill Road, construction of detached, what is ADU, it's a.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, barn septic system, new driveway associated with an existing primary residence. Doug DeVesta is the engineer on this, um, Doug, are you here?
He's on vacation, this is Steve Odom, I'm the owner.
Hi Steve.
Hey.
Okay, well Doug talked to us last meeting, I know that uh, he met Eversource out there, for some reason, they want the electric to go right through the wetlands.
Yeah, we have a, we have an existing transformer, um, close to where the new barn is gonna go, and they wanted to just go right across. Uh, direct shot, it's about a hundred and eighty feet, I believe.
Okay, could you zoom in a little? Sure. I'm trying to look where they're proposing the electrical. Is that right here, this one right here?
Correct.
Probably, yeah.
Yep, here's the existing transformer. And this is where they want to bring it right through here, so it's, it's uh, through, through the wetlands at that point.
Yeah, and, and there's, um, I, I sent John Cody a photo from behind the transformer, it's a direct shot, there's really no trees. We wouldn't be taking out any trees or anything, it just goes through there.
What was his previous plan, I think he came in off the road up the driveway?
Yeah, it was way, way down on Grassy Hill Road, there's a um, a pole. On Grassy Hill, if you scroll kind of over to the right, and they would, they would have to cut down two big trees, basically where the word hill is.
See, yeah, I see what you mean.
That's where the pole is.
It's not about a cheaper way, it's about. A more feasible and prudent way.
Yeah, exactly.
Chris, you want to report on your sidewalk?
Sure, I went out there uh, this morning, it's a beautiful site, um, and the way the contours kind of lay out, there's kind of a crest. Right behind where the, where the proposed barn and, and ADU will be. Um, so there's very little, I, I don't see much risk at all, especially with, you know, proper silt fence and everything. That anything would really be going towards the wetlands, um, you know, it's, it's more of a swell, I, I'm not even sure there's an active. Stream in there, um, it just seems to be, you know, like one of those areas in a field that. Is a depression and ends up catching water and then over time, you know, vegetation.
Okay, so it's not a swamp or, or, you know, vernal pools, all that stuff?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, and um, so they don't really need to use swamp mats, you know, swamp mats are used if you're in really mucky stuff. Because if you don't use them with a machine, the machine could sink in and get stuck.
They may have a little trouble, I mean, I don't know how soft it is out there, they may have trouble running a machine through it for the uh, for the underground, but. Um, for the utilities, but I think from the standpoint of building the house and the barn. I don't think there's gonna be any chance really of disturbing the wetlands or encroaching on it.
Right, but I'm concerned about them going through the wetlands, but if you're saying it's like a field of, I know. Wetlands aren't always wetlands, they're defined by the soil type, and if you have a depression and water. For years and years collects there, the soil turns what's called hydric, and then that's a wetland soil. So I think what I'm hearing is, it's, it's not like this diverse thing with salamanders and turtles swimming through it, it's, it's just field.
Yeah, where they're gonna be doing their work is all field.
Okay, alright.
I, I have a question, um, Keith, can you, can you uh, zoom down or rotate this down? So I can see. So we see, I see the boundary, the wetland boundary on the ADU side, but where is it on the other side?
You mean on the top, on the top?
Yeah.
On the top, the driveway, I think when they put in the driveway in two thousand and two, it probably cut through the wetlands. So if you look at the existing driveway, it would continue uh, north, I think that would be north. Toward the top of the map.
Well, it certainly doesn't go across the road.
I, I guess it just kind of looks like everything that's been built is in the wetlands, according to this.
No, no, um, the wetlands are mainly on my neighbor's property, if you see the heavy dotted lines that come to a kind of, kind of a sharp angle, yep, right there. That, that's, that's where there's a little stream, it's kind of following that, um, that heavy dotted line, the property boundary.
I don't think it's critical on this point, Rob, because it, you know, it goes to the road, you could assume that. And the other house in two thousand and two, of course, wasn't put in wetlands, um, you can see how his flags kind of start trending towards the road. At the end there, right where Keith's pointing it, um, so you could, I mean, for the purposes of this, you could just assume. You know, the top is the road. And the house is not in wetlands.
I do know that these wet meadows are great to work in, you know, when it's dry, but if you, you know, if you get a wet, wet time of year. You know, you could make a real mess of it with a machine going through there.
Yeah, I have a plan to do it over the winter when things are real solid.
Oh, it's frozen. Any other questions? Haven't heard one, do I have a motion? Are there more questions that need to be asked, because if there are not, we need to make a motion.
I, I just, it, it, once again, and, and why aren't you bringing the power in from, from Grassy Hill?
Cause.
Uh, you know, along the driveway?
Yeah, uh, Ever, Eversource came out and they recommended going the other way. Because there were um, several large trees that they were gonna have to cut down between the power pole on Grassy Hill. And they're gonna have, they would have to install a new power pole near where the um, new driveway is gonna go. And then to run the, run the line between the existing power pole and the new power pole, it goes across two big trees. And so they were, and then it was gonna be another five or six hundred feet from there to the barn. And so they were debating, do we have to put in yet another transformer? And then um, I, I, I think that they just concluded by far the simplest way is just to pull it right off the existing transformer.
I, 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 I have no problem with this alternative.
Alright, so I need a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity.
Who was that? Do you have a second? Who, who made the motion, please?
Rob.
Rob Horegon. Okay, and the second?
I'll second it.
I just have.
Chris Haggerty. Yep.
One condition though, that it's done in a dry time.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know if.
Or a frozen time.
Yeah, it would have, but the frozen time means you're digging through frost, which, you know, is counterproductive, because you're disturbing more stuff, because you're digging through a couple feet of frost.
Okay. Yep. So we have a motion, and we have a second with a condition that the work be done during the dry time, um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Steve.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
What's next? Uh, the Wellers Bridge. Is there somebody here for that?
Greg Garrison, I'm here with VHB.
Oh, thank God. I, I thought Pat Roy was gonna show up. Okay, uh, so I will seat Sierra back on for this. This is uh, as everybody knows, Wellers Bridge Road is closed because it's fallen down, and this proposal is to remove the whole bridge and then replace it, so.
Russ, I'm gonna have to abstain from this.
Oh, there's a land trust swap, right?
Well, I don't, I haven't heard about what was decided there, but uh, yeah, I mean, it's going, it's gonna affect our property here.
Okay, so I will see Chris for, for John. Okay, go ahead Greg.
Alright, I've got a presentation if I can share, does that work?
Okay, I'll take, I'll stop mine.
Alright.
There you go.
Let's, we should probably share first. Oh boy. Pick the right one. Hey, this is it. How's that look, you see the, the cover page of the presentation?
There we go.
Alright, let me pull it back up. Alright. Do some of this. Alright, I think we're all set up now.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, hi, I'm Greg Garrison with VHB, um, we're the consultant liaison engineer for this project to replace. Bridge number fifty sixty-eight conveying the Sheepog River under Wellers Bridge Road in Roxbury. Uh, this is a town project with the town of Roxbury is the applicant, I think, I'm not sure if that's how it's actually on the, on the application, but. Technically would be the, the applicant where the uh, authorized agent, the town project is administered by Connecticut DOT and is fully federally funded. As such, the project has received a pretty thorough review by the state and federal regulators, so DEEP, Army Corps. And Connecticut Office of Environmental Planning, we're pretty far along in the design process, where actually, I think this project advertised. Um, or is advertising the last month or this month, so we are, you know, at the end of design, we're, we're near the finish line. Um, the plans have been approved, I mean, uh, yeah, reviewed, approved uh, by Deep Fisheries, and uh, we'll get into more permitting, but uh, so yeah, that's the. That's the cover page, that's the basis, so the location, you guys are all familiar, um.
Yep.
Wellers, yep, Wellers Bridge is about three hundred feet east of uh, intersection with Route sixty-seven. And about the same distance west of River Road. It's an aerial, so you're the rural, um, the rural nature, as discussed as a land trust on the northwest side of, um, of the bridge. Aside from that, there's not really any structures that are affected by changes to, to the bridge within the, you know, within the influence. Um, there's a vegetated island north of the bridge. The purpose in need of this project is to replace the deteriorated condition, um, due to structural deficiencies of the existing structure. As you noted, the bridge was closed this month for safety concerns, uh, due to deterioration of the deck and the sick, the superstructure. Uh, the existing pier is also a scour critical element, so in the nineties, there was a scour report done that determined that the pier had the potential for being undermined by scour. And the proposed uh, replacement is gonna address that. And uh, the proposed, proposed replacement also provide a structure in a state of good repair that meets the current load ratings and highway design standards. So, so real quick, the, the existing structure is a two-span, uh, multi-gear, so steel, steel superstructure. Um, two spans meaning it's, there's two separate spans that are separated by the pier. Um, this top right photo is, you can see some of the deterioration that's happened in the deck, um, in reason for closing the bridge, um. The total structure length is a hundred and forty-seven feet currently, the max span is sixty-eight feet, so there's two spans that are each approximately sixty-eight feet. Uh, the out-to-out is, is twenty-five and a half feet, um, approximately three thousand vehicles per day go over the bridge. And the drainage area is a hundred and thirty-two square miles. So we got a, some few photos of the bridge, um, this is looking north, you can see the vegetated island behind the pier. Uh, the pier separating the, the two, the two spans, uh, you can see that the abutments for the existing structure are basically in the channel, um, and there's no abankments in front of them. Um, there's some degradation around the pier, some, some sediment accumulation. This is looking downstream from the northwest bank. This is looking downstream from the northwest bank. Uh, we can see the vegetated island to the, to the west, or to the, north of the pier structure. This is the vegetated island to the north, so we're standing on the bridge here, looking north, flow splits around the island. This island has the only wetlands that were delineated on site. So basically, the island itself is, is mostly wetlands, um, state. Uh, state regulated wetlands, a, a qualified soil scientist and, and well and scientist uh went out. The delineation report believes in the uh, is in the application package. Looking south from the bridge or downstream.
Right, right, one question. The island's there because of the bridge, right? It's the abutment that is, because that island. A couple of, maybe ten years ago, we, we dug it, we dug the island out at the recommendation of DOT. So that's gonna stay?
It's, you know, it, we're not gonna. As part of the project, there's no impacts to the island, so the island will remain. What happens, you know, as the pier, the pier will be removed, you're gonna see here pretty, pretty quickly, so. Um, so what happens is, you know, I guess we'll, we'll see, it's, it's the certainly potential for. That island to, to go away as, you know, the pier does potentially cause that accumulation upstream. I've done a lot of looking back at historical photos and it does appear, so this, this bridge was built in the fifties. Prior to that, it was in a different location. I'm not sure where that location was, I don't know if it was, you know, slightly upstream or downstream, my understanding is it was not in this location. And there was still a small island here, so um, there may be an island remaining at, you know. Been several years, um, but. You know, that's, that's a little history on the island that after doing some digging, but we are not gonna impact this island as part of the project.
Great, okay.
So looking south downstream, you can, you know, it's kinda nice with the ice in here, you can see where the channel. Kinda hugs the uh, the left side here, the, the east, the east bank. So this is looking west uh from the, from the bridge at the intersection of. Highway sixty-seven or Baker Road, as well as this parking on the south side. For um Angler Access and um there's a shoulder on the right side where the cars are parked here in that land trust property to the north. Um, you'll see as part of this project that, that. The location of that parking, so Angler Access is gonna be maintained, that's a deep priority for sure. Um, it's gonna be in approximately the same location, but it's gonna be on the north side of the bridge. Because this bridge, the, the roadway is gonna be relocated about twenty feet south. Um, to improve the alignment some coming from the east side. Um, so this, the road and the, the bridge will be, you know, located. Basically on the south side of that. Parking area and that parking area will end up on the north side of the, of the new roadway and bridge location. This is looking east, so up the, you know, the S curve and um towards river, river road intersection. And you can see the uh, there's no sidewalk on the bridge, it's pretty narrow. Um, so that's all, the standards will be, the, the widths will be updated to current standards. Uh, the project is in a FEMA flood zone, um, with established base flood elevations. This is the proposed site plan. The highlighted, the, the regulatory lines are highlighted, green is the wetlands, blue is ordinary high water. And red is the hundred-year base flood. Um, you can see looking at the, the wetlands that they're just north, you can see the pier is. You know, not as bold as the lines south of it, and so you can see the new structure, the bold lines that cross. The stream mostly to the south of the pier, so that gives you an idea of where. Uh, you know, the current structure is over the pier and the new structure will be. Um, located roughly twenty feet south. To the west, or yes, on the west side, you can see that that. It said, there's a call out for relocate existing rock monument, that rock monument is basically gonna, the rocks that are currently. Um, protecting the parking area will be flipped and there'll be additional added to allow for parking for Angler Access. You'll see that there's some proposed drainage uh on the west side, that drainage will, you know, mitigate any ponding. And, you know, get some of that, the, the. Stormwater off of the, the west side of the bridge, it outlets on the north side and that's due to the requirements for. Uh, the, the flared wing walls, the, the north side of the structure is gonna have. Wing walls or retaining wall parallel to the road, the south will have um flared wing walls and that's part of the design. You can also see there's a lot of riprap or, you know, the bubbles, um. The bubbled hatching is, is large riprap that'll be installed to protect the new structure from scour, there's. Still some calculated scour, so we're gonna protect the, the new abutments from that and. The scour critical, criticality, criticality will be eliminated. Um, by removing that pier and, and, you know, this, this bridge will be, is designed for a two-hundred-year design storm, five-hundred-year check storm, so. Um, you know, these are FHWA requirements and the, the bridge will be um set on. Concrete abutments and supported by piles driven into bedrock. So there's, let's see. You know, removal of the pier. Will also increase the hydraulic capacity, so. Let's see in the following slide that we're widening the bridge, make sure I'm not, let's see. Oh yeah, sidewalk on the, on the downstream side, there's a, there's gonna be a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk added. Um, as requested the town, it starts close to the intersection of sixty-seven, highway sixty-seven and extends. Over towards River Road and uh that is for future connectivity. And as part of coordination with deep on top of that, so that the riprap will be filled in, the void will be filled in with streambed material. And there'll be plantings uh for this. Um, projects, there's trees brush and uh conservation and wildflower seeding will be. Based on top of the riprap. Uh, to promote. You know, species here and uh, and help establish that, that riprap and stabilize it. Pretty quickly. Alright, so here's a cross-section of the proposed bridge to show that it is, you know, quite a bit wider, thirty-seven feet, the current is twenty-five and a half feet. Um, so we've got two twelve-foot lanes, two foot, two, two-foot shoulders on either side, a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. And then open bridge rail which um. Helps the hydraulics. With some of the uh more significant storms. So, this is meeting current highway standards. This is an elevation of the proposed bridge replacement. Uh, as you can see, the pier is removed, it's a single-span structure, so the hydraulic opening is, is. Quite a bit larger, the, the abutments will be set back from the channel. Um, so the, the replacement is designed really to follow Army Corps and deep guidelines to return the stream crossing to pre-existing natural conditions. Uh, the, the project's been to interagency meeting, the state and federal regulators and all recommendations. Have been included to the, um, in the design, you see in the permit plans. Uh, the single-span bridge replaces existing two-span. The clear span across the river will be increased from a hundred and thirty-five roughly feet to a hundred and sixty-one point two. Um, so, you know, much increasing the hydraulic capacity allows the natural flow of the Sheepog River to be restored through the crossing and will mitigate flooding. The hundred sixty-one foot span provides more than one point two times bankful width, which is, which is. An Army Corps best management practice. The, will be decreasing flood flows and scour potential while. The natural channel width is maintained, large riprap will be installed to protect the abutments and foundations from scour undermining. Ripraps, as you said, will be washed in with supplemental streambed material to fill the voids and allow seeding to take place quickly. Wildlife shells will be installed on either side to allow the passage, the safe passage of wildlife below the bridge. Which is currently pretty tough with the abutment set um in the stream. Upon completion. Uh, ball disturb areas in the project limits will be stabilized and restored with conservation seeding. Wildlife seeding plantings coordinated with DOT. Um, Office Environmental Planning and the natural, the, well, deep, we'll say deep. That covers it for this slide. Water handling, so in order to remove the structure, the, the existing structure, install the new structure. Um, there's a single stage of water handling, traffic will be detoured around the site as it is currently, since the bridge is currently closed. There'll be a temporary access trestle. Installed to remove the pier, so what that is, is a platform set on. On columns, um, it will not be allowed to block. The, the stream completely, so there's a call out for it here, you can see it better on the next slide, I'm not sure if you guys can see my. My arrow, but it's, it's. Proposed to be installed from the west bank to the pier. And um so the water will flow through between the columns. Um, and it's in the contract that the contractor will not be allowed to block flow on this side of the river. The temporary water handling design is all, is all based on full flow through here, so they won't be allowed to do that. Um, you can see water handling, coffer dams will be placed at the abutments, so in front of both abutments as well as around the pier. And those will be installed to complete all work behind confinement. Um, in the dry. Ball work will be, you know, dewatered through temporary watering basins. Um, the water handling allows for dewatering soil retention. So the, the water handling, say this, the sequence is that the exist, the. Uh, the existing abutments will be removed. The. Proposed. Structure will be installed, new embankment will be installed on either side and riprap will be placed. And the pier will be removed, um, the contractor has some. You know, some, some flexibility in, in whether the peers remove first or. You know, the abutments, but. A lot of the work will probably be um sequential. Let's see, the uh. Yeah, we'll go to the next one. So impacts, so unavoidable impacts to the water course um occur because of. You know, to, to remove the structure and install the new, the new structure, there's no impacts to the wellens. Permanent impacts are due to the removal of the existing pier and abutments, installation of new abutments and the scour, uh, the riprap scour protection. The temporary impacts are due to the water handling coffer dam installation to complete work behind confinement as well as installing the. Uh, temporary access trestle. There's also the town of Roxbury's regulated upland review area, which is. Regulated two hundred feet from the ordinary high water of the Sheepog River. These impacts are result, so there's. You know, just under an acre of impacts. You know, pretty large uh project area to get this work done. The uh, the impacts are a result of the realignment of the Wellers Bridge Road. Uh, construction of the new bridge, full-depth roadway reconstruction, also sees. All-associated incidental work, proposed drainage improvements, installation of the sidewalk. Um, areas for stockpiling, materials will be determined by the contractor. Any material that can't be stockpiled on site may be coordinated with the town at an off-site location. Alright, so floodplain impacts, so below the hundred-year base flood elevation, there's four hundred cubic yards of net fill. That is mostly to do with the relocation and the embankment fill. To support the new roadways, there's no impacts anticipated to the floodplain capacity as a result of the fill. Um, the, the increased hydraulic opening and the widening of the bridge offset. That fill. And, you know, provide an improvement in the water surface elevation, so the, the, the water surface elevation for the hundred-year. Flood is um approximately a half a foot lower in the proposed condition. Um, so there is a pretty good increase or decrease in water surface and improvement in the hydraulic capacity. Sediment control plan. Um, because this is a, a, a state DOT administered product, uh, project. Um, state regulations have to be followed and that's, they have, um, you know, the Form eight eighteen is actually, the Form eight nineteen now, this may be. Because it's, this, this has been in design for a couple of years, maybe sticking to the eight eighteen, but they are. They are beholden to the twenty twenty-four storm water, uh, storm quality manual as well as the twenty twenty-four Kennedy guidelines for. Soil erosion and sediment, sediment, uh, sedimentation control. Um, deep documents and as we discussed, water handling is gonna be performed to. Water handling coffer dams will, will be used for soil retention and dewatering through an appropriate uh filtration basin. The water handling will be tied into the sediment control at the toe of engineered slopes to prevent. Uh, soil from entering the, the river and uh increased turbidity. Uh, the proposed drainage will outlet over riprap to filter sediment and decrease velocities. Uh, storage of construction materials and vehicle refueling will take place outside of the regulated floodplain. And a third-party inspector will be overseeing all this and that third-party inspector is hired by the town. So there's been a lot of coordination with the regulators. Uh, deep fisheries. Coordination resulted in improved unrestricted fish pa, fish passage due to removal of the pier. And the decrease in the bridge, bridge construction from widening the, the abutments out to that hundred and sixty feet. Um, unconfining in-stream work within the stream will be restricted from June first, September thirtieth. Uh, that does not include or, the, the water handling coffer dams will allow to be installed in that, um, outside of that time to allow. Confined work to occur. Outside of that period. Deep NDB, your national diversity database. Uh, has been coordinated with, there are several species. On site, it's, you know, we're in an NDB area here, um, pretty prolific uh area for. Wildlife, so final determination was. Was received on June, in June twenty twenty-five. Um, so several species, bats, turtles, birds, dragonfly, a qualified herpetologist will be. Um, onsite during construction, but a qualified herpetologist and entomologist have performed site sweeps, there's. A reptile protection plan that was written for the site and will be part of the contract that must be followed by the contractor. That is included in the application package as well. And all best management practices required by deep for. Protecting the species have been incorporated and um included with that is, is plantings to protect one species in, in particular. And really allow that uh, uh species to proliferate, so. Um, similar with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, so that the federal species there. Uh, were one or two federal species and BNP's have been. Um, included in the permit plans to protect those species as well. Um, additional resource coordination with state historic preservation of Shippo. Um, resulted in no adverse effects to historic properties out here and. The tribes have been coordinated with and received a letter of no comment. So the permitting, that's uh necessary for this project is local permitting here. With Roxbury and the Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Uh, state permitting is flood management certification, we're in the final stages of getting that approved now. Um, and that approves the hydraulic flood, uh floodway and uh scour design. And then federal, federally, there's uh coordination with Army Corps. The self-verification permit that'll be submitted when a contractor is selected. And that will be reviewed and approved by Army Corps before the start of the project. The project is planned to go to construction in twenty twenty-six and. Looking to be about a sixteen-month job, so we're looking at two seasons ending around the fall of twenty twenty-seven. Looking to be about a sixteen month job, so we're looking at two seasons ending around the fall of twenty twenty seven.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a, it's a. Big bridge project, um, so a lot of coordinations happen at this point and, um. But I think I'll uh conclude it here and. And see if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Greg, that was uh really well done, um. Does anybody have any questions? I think they flipped over every rock.
Has a contractor been selected?
They have not.
No, we're going out to bid in February.
Yeah.
Hey, hey Russ, can I just say something on behalf of the land trust?
Sure.
Um, Greg, I'm John Smalling, a president of Roxbury Land Trust. We were brought in on this, I think about a year and a half ago, is a uh. Concept that uh would we be open to discussion and this is the first I'm hearing of anything since then. Um, we haven't agreed to anything, you know, this affects our properties and, um. Also, the uh, we own both sides there, um. The uh state has, we bought those with state money from the OSWA grant. The state has a conservation easement that we would. Be uh required to get approval from them also.
Alright, um, I know that I haven't been involved in the, in the talks with the land trust, I was. I was under the, um. Assumption and and impression that we had continuing talks with the land trust and that had been discussed more, especially with the the deep. Um, parking access. Also.
No, we haven't, yeah.
Okay, and I think that we are. Let's say it looks like we're staying inside the street line, but on the north side we are, and it looks like there is some. Um. Property outside of, it looks like there's a little bit outside of the street line to the south, so, I mean, there's. Certainly rightaways, um, DOT, so this is DOT rightaways handles, the the rightaway acquisitions and, um. You know, easements for the property, um, for the project, I should say, and so. If there hasn't been discussions yet, there certainly will be before this project is starts. And uh, I'm I'm honestly a little surprised that there hasn't been more. Um, discussions with you, cause I know that's, it was initiated at some point and.
Right, yeah, initiated, we were brought in, there was talk of a land swap going on there and that was the last that we ever heard of it.
Okay. That's good, good you brought that up.
Yeah, my main concern are.
So Greg, you guys should should start more communication with them.
Yeah, there'll be.
Any other questions? Um, I guess it's a regulated activity and we can't approve it at this meeting, cause we have to allow fourteen days for a public hearing request. Um, which probably won't come, but we still have to wait, um, so we'll. In the meantime, everybody should go down now that you know what the plans are and take a sidewalk and.
Russ, I have one question.
Yep.
Sorry. Um, just a question, um, so if that pier is being removed. Um, so it's gonna kind of change the flow of the river. And if you're heading to, I'm thinking the north, so heading up. Um, towards, um, like. The land trust property or Zex or wherever, there's that huge ba- bend, is there, is it, I mean, is there. That they've looked at, is there gonna be more scouring on that riverbank with the the stream quality? I'm just curious about that.
It it's not anticipated that the. That this would affect, you know, upstream or downstream very far, the, you know, hydraulic models show that it. It converges with existing flows and velocities pretty quickly and, uh, being that it's a half foot. Um, you know, decrease in water surface upstream. Um, as the, you know, the current bridge blocks some of the flow in these really, you know. Significant events, we're talking hundred, two hundred, five hundred year events, um. That there is a small increase in in the in the velocities as. You know, if the water surface comes down to, you know, typically the the velocities come up, but uh, let me see if I. It's 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 on the order of, you know, one to two feet per second and the the velocities aren't, um. You know, are considered erosive upstream, you know, outside of the influence of the bridge where the contraction is. Um, through the bridge where that's, you know, where you get your increases in velocity and that's, that's where, you know. This project affects the channel as far as scour and and velocities, it actually decreases the velocities around the bridge. Um, but really outside of that influence of the bridge constriction, um. There's not really any changes anticipated to flooding events. Or to scout.
Okay, so I guess I, cause I just was wondering, you know, what had, how much further upstream. That the, you know, that, you know, when they're looking at doing this project, if it had been looked at or if it was just in the immediate vicinity of the project, so.
No, they do, they do a total flow evaluation. And look at up, look at all the area that might be impacted.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? But that was a good question, Sue, cause uh, we all hike down there and, boy, that river takes a. Left hand turn pretty quick and uh, there's a lot of riprap that's had to been put on the bank to protect. The old railroad bed, so that's a good question. Um, anybody else? So, anybody could go do a sidewalk, if you wanna go with somebody else, take them with you. And uh, and we will do this around Christmas time.
Well, our next meeting, uh, Russ, our next meeting is December sixteenth, it's, it was uh different from the time.
Right, uh, did you change that?
No, no, it had already been changed.
Alright, we we didn't make it to twenty third, okay, I didn't think we did, we normally don't. I'm actually surprised we're here tonight, cause usually we do the meeting a week before Thanksgiving, but we're all here. Nobody's going away, I guess, and Chris already ran away, but. Um, alright, with that, is is there anything else?
Nope.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, wait, if there's no uh WEO report?
Oh. Is there, John?
Oh, it certainly can be, um.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Actually, it's very brief, this will take just a second. I've only issued seven non-regulated permits, a couple generators, a couple sheds, uh, solar. Uh, quick septic repair, enforcement actions, there hasn't been anything on that front. Uh, one thing I would like to bring attention to was Dennis McDonald's structure that he's building at Six Baker Road. He does have a garage door in the back, but I'm gonna maintain a close eye on that to see as this progresses. Because as we know, he's right on the cusp of the wetlands there. Um, he he won't be able to drive his vehicles through there if that's what he's thinking. Um, besides that, that's, that pretty much sums it up, we're busy on the zoning front.
Hmm, too busy.
Yeah, way too busy.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who was that?
John.
John.
Okay.
And I'll second it. Oh, favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving.
Have a great one.